Test. Is it on? So, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We have several committee members who are coming in as they get here. We'll just help them get to their seats, their names are labeled, but we'd like to respect your time and get started. My name is Stacy Dupre, and we are keeping our mask on at all times even when we speak to secure and protect everybody. This is Mr. Marlon Kuzan, he's my co-facilitator. We both work for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. If you look on the screen, if you haven't had a chance to sign in yet, if you'd like to speak, you need to sign in and we will call you up to speak to the committee as the public forum part of this process. So now we're gonna change the slide. And after Mr. Kuzan goes over the ground rules, we're letting a few more committee members get here so they can introduce themselves.
Yes, we are. Good evening, everyone. A few ground rules and procedures regarding public comments. Please submit your name through the request for the public comment link. If you look on the screens, the first slide that was up there, there's a slide and we'll put it back up. You can simply use your camera phone and put it over the QR code and it'll pull that link up for you. You only need to submit your first and last name. When you hit submit, it'll automatically come over to our desk and you will be called up to the microphone in the order in which your name was received. Okay? We're gonna ask your comment does not that... We keep all comments in here for only an hour and 20 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed only two minutes to address the group and you will only have one opportunity. Once you start speaking, I will start the timer. The timer will go for two minutes. All speakers, if you look right here, we have the timer there for you as well because this is the microphone from which you will speak. Once you get down to the final 30 seconds, the yellow light will light up and that will indicate you only have 20 more seconds for your comment. Please limit them to two minutes only, please. Please maintain your physical distancing and remember to refrain from touching the microphone if possible. And of course, we want you to all be respectful of all speakers. Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to ask each committee member to introduce yourself. Also, committee members, because our technical people don't know everybody up here, when you speak, before you speak, if you can raise your hand and they'll know which mic to turn on. So let's start over here with Mr. Aaron Angel.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Aaron Angel. I'm a math teacher at the high school. I've been a teacher for three years, about to start my fourth. Very, very honored to be on this committee. I take this very seriously, so thank you all for the time.
Hello, my name is Taylor Clark. I am a senior at Lee High School. And, hi.
Hello, my name is Ronald Gibson. I'm a junior at Lee High and I thank you all for inviting me to this committee.
Hello, my name is Jackson Lawrence. I'm a ninth grader at Lee High and I'm very thankful to be on this committee.
Hello, my name is Brandon White. I'm the athletic director at Lee High. This is my fifth year, going into my fifth year at Lee. I've been there since the school reopened and I'm very honored to be on this committee as well.
Good evening. My name is Shawana Ross and I'm one of the proud, proud Assistant Principals of Lee Magnin High School.
Hello, I'm Mike Goday and I'm currently president of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and also am a member from District 7 where Lee High School is located.
Good evening. My name is Lila W. I'm a community member. I'm a parent of two children who attend East Baton Rouge Public Schools and I'm also proud to live across the street from Lee High and a proud member of the South Downs community.
Hello, my name is Corey Delahoussy. I am a parent of two children who are... One who just graduated from Lee and one who is a sophomore at Lee. I've been there for, going on six years now and very proud of the education my kids have received there. I'm very honored to be on this board.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cleve Dunn Jr., local business owner. I also too have a daughter who just graduated from the school formerly known as Lee High and have a incoming senior at the school formerly known as Lee High. I'm very proud of the education that they've gained at the school and I'm honored to be on this committee to bring about this much needed change. Thank you.
My name is Mary Michael. I am a graduate of what was known as Robert E. Lee High School many years ago. I'm a community member and I live in the district of the school and I am proud to be on this committee and happy to serve.
So I want to thank all our committee members because they gave up their time. They have reviewed all the public comments. We had 5,549 comments. So they had a lot of deep reading this weekend and I'd like to thank them for doing that. Thank y'all for taking and volunteering to do that. So we're gonna go to the next slide and I'm gonna go over some basic ground rules and protocol that we go through during this process. So, of course, it's the renaming of Lee High School and all of us who've visited this wonderful facility, it's state of the art. We're very blessed to have this building. So our agenda. We start with our welcome, our presentation of guidelines. We're gonna have public comment, submission of possible names by the committee members. Then the committee will have some discussion and review. Then, we'll make the final votes. It may take us one round, it may take us 10 rounds. Now, one thing we have to keep in mind, this is not a popularity contest. We could've had 1,000 names, but the committee looked at each name submitted and each name you're gonna bring forward today evenly and equally. We wanted everybody to have a chance to speak. So before we leave here, we will have the... Narrow down to three names. This committee does not make the final decision. A memo will go to our superintendent, Mr. Warren Drake, who's in the back. Hi, Mr. Drake. He will then take that memo. If he sees fit, forward it to the board. And then the school board will make the final decision at our board meeting on Thursday, which is at 5:00 PM. So you have an opportunity today for a public comment and another opportunity at the board meeting. Next slide. So we have to follow policy FDC. This policy is, what do you do when you're naming an existing name? An existing school? We have to give a recommendation upon the approval of the superintendent, which will then go forward to the school board and we have to follow all laws and regulations of the state. Next slide. Name of existing facilities. So what do we do? The superintendent, Mr. Drake, appointed a committee. Representatives from the community in the school which is located are on the committee. Employees of the school system. We only have employees of the school themselves here on the committee. We want it to be as close to the situation and the students and the parents as possible. We have representatives of the student body. We're blessed to have three representatives of the student body here. Then the committee whole... We also have a board member. We have... We're very blessed to have two board members serving on our committee. Then, we start the process. Once we get all the input, we make nominations, go through communication, discuss it, and then hopefully at the end, we'll have it narrowed down. Those names, as I said, will then go to Mr. Drake, which will then go to the board. The board will make the final decision. What does that mean? That means that if the board so chooses that the three names they've received, they wanna change it, adjust it or change it, it is under their purview to do so because the board makes the final decision. Next slide. So we had a lot of names of living people. On the information that I sent to our committee, I put those names at the end because state law Title 42... says that essentially you cannot name a school or a large facility after a living person. You would have to go to the legislature and get special permission to do so. However, some of y'all were here in the last meeting, the last board meeting we had, and we did name a gymnasium after a living person. There is a subsection that does allow that, but not a full school, and I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. So that's why those names will not be considered today because they do not meet the criteria. Next slide. Community input. We had a survey out until July 2nd, it was out over two weeks. And I'm just amazed, this is the most responses I've gotten. So we'll go to the next slide. We had 5,549 responses. 47.7% came from our community members. 17.6% came from alumni. 14.2% came from parents and/or guardians. 9.1% came from our students. 4.6% came from our faculty and 6.1% came from other individuals in our community. That's a great response. It's the best response we ever have and I'd like to thank everybody in the community who gave us this information to share. Next slide. So, I went through and Mr. Kuzan, Marlon Kuzan, helped me read through all the responses and we grouped them and we set a cutoff at 30. And I shared this with the committee. These are the ones that had 30 or more. We had a whole lot that may had one or two responses. They still know. They can choose that one name. If it's a name that only has one, they can make that selection. But just for the good of the group, there were 35 responses that contained the term "college", that's .65%. There were 49 responses that contained the term "Highland", that's .91%. 622 contained the term "Lee High", that's 11.6%. 89 contained the term "Liberty", 1.65%. 46 respondents contained the term "Lincoln", that is .85%. 45 respondents gave the term "Louisiana", .84%. 31 contained the term "Red Stick", .56%. 674 respondents contained the term "South Downs", that's 12.5%. 35 contained the term "Unity", .65%. 92 contained a variation of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., MLK, or some derivative of that and that's 1.7%. 166 contained J. or Joy Wallace, 3.1%. That's a former teacher from the school, just for the good of the audience. 60 contained the term "Oscar Dunn", 1.1%. 300 contained the name "PBS Pinchback", 5.6%. 292 respondents gave the name "Sadie Roberts Joseph", 5.4%. And 62 respondents gave us the name "T.J. Jemison", 1.2%. So we had a lot of input and these are the ones that came to 30 respondents or higher. Next slide. So before we do this, I would like our additional committee members to introduce themselves. For our committee members who came in, because we... Everybody does not know you. When you speak, if you would please raise your hand so they can turn your mic on. So I'm gonna get out of the way.
You guys hear me? Okay. Walter Gina McLaughlin. Not sure what the format is here, but I am Director of Community Engagement for Bill, Bad and Rouge. I'm a parent. I am a parent of a former student. I was a graduate, 1998 graduate of Lee High myself and I'm also a parent of incoming freshman at Lee High School.
How you all doing? I'm sorry, I'm also going live tonight just for people who can't make it here tonight. My name is Darius Lannis, school board member for District 2, East Baton Rouge Parish. Thank you.
So now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Kuzan. And for those of y'all, if you'd like to speak and you didn't get a chance to scan it, the code's gonna come back up and we also have paper copies on this front table so you can scan to speak.
Once again, for the good of the audience, just wanna go over the ground rules once again. Remember, you can submit your name through the request for a public comment link. Simply scan the QR code. We also have some paper ones that are floating around the room. Remember, your comments should not exceed two minutes. You'll have a two-minute limit and I'll start, the minute you start speaking, I'll start a timer and you'll be able to make note of your time right here. Okay? Two-minute time limit, one opportunity for comment per person. Please maintain your physical distancing as you're doing a great job of and please remember to try not to touch the microphone. And once again, let's please be respectful of all speakers. Thank you. One more comment, please. Please be mindful that we're only addressing the renaming of Lee High School tonight. No other comments. This is about the renaming of Lee High School. So let's please keep our comments for that. Thank you.
Judge Trudy White?
As a 1974 graduate of McKinley Senior High School, I strongly urge that the name you select for the school will have a connection to East Baton Rouge Parish, the East Baton Rouge Parish School System, Baton Rouge and Lee Magnin High School because education is local. Joshua P. Wilson was a resident of Baton Rouge. Joshua P. Wilson was a state representative for East Baton Rouge Parish during Reconstruction, which began in 1865 after the Civil War.
Joshua... Testing, testing.
Joshua P. Wilson was considered to be moderately wealthy. He owned property at the corner of Highland up to Star and Lane and that's where East Baton Rouge Parish Wildwood Elementary is now located. This was a time, at the time that he lived, where there was no running water, telephones, televisions, computers, automobiles or Walmart. And so, it was an opportunity for, when you say moderately wealthy, that meant that he built his wealth from his own hands. Joshua P. Wilson was the father of a free woman of color, Rachel Wilson, who married a planter and that was a plantation owner. One of the brothers, the two brothers owned Moss Side Plantation and Silver Side Plantation. And so, from that lineage, I come. Joshua P. Wilson's legacy includes teachers such as Robin White Clark and Birdette L. White. Robin White Clark is currently employed as a teacher, a pre-kindergarten teacher at Sharon Hills Elementary School. And of course, Birdette L. White was a physical education teacher at Estruma. And... Oh, my time is up. Okay. Testing one-two, testing one-two. Testing one-two-three. Testing, testing one-two, testing one-two. Alright, so I'm here to recognize Joshua P. Wilson, sergeant of Lee. His daughter, Rachel Wilson, who married the planter. Their property is property where the district, the Lee High School district was drawn originally before Lee High became a Magnin School. And I'd like to find... Thank... I'd like to thank everybody for choosing and deciding to take this responsibility of renaming Lee Magnin School at heart. And for the students here, I would like to say that my nephew, Sean J. Clark, is an honor graduate from Lee Magnin High School and he did exceptionally well in his first year at Louisiana Tech. Thank you for the opportunity and I've given each one of you a packet that explains his background and I'd ask you in your free time to review it and consider it. Thank you very much.
Do I get... Okay. Okay, okay. Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanna say this. As an individual who helped integrate sports in this town in 1971 before any U.A.L. at the school was even thought about, we did that because we wanted to bring this community together. I played on a basketball team where we had to go all over the state of Louisiana to come back in the middle of the night with two sandwiches and a carton of milk. That is a fact. And when we integrated, we wanted to bring this community together where we all can live together, work together and do things together. The name on the building didn't make a difference at all to us because we was a bunch of young guys saying all we wanted to do was bring the community together. You all the students at Lee High School, you know what Lee High School mean to you. I'm glad that this school board allowed the individuals who have a lot to lose and a lot to gain to be a part of a name change. There's a movement going around in this country to take and destroy the history of this country. It's called "history". And I want you all to understand one thing. When you cracked that door, when they took Robert off that building and left Lee, you cracked the door to change the name, not only that building, but every other building. When is it gonna stop? It started with Lee High. What about Woodlawn? Look up the history of Woodlawn. Look up the history of McKinley. You look up the history of Scotty Longbeard, whatever school is. What you wanna do as young men on this committee, you wanna be able to go into a building regardless of what the name on it and you wanna excel. You wanna compete against the best of the best. It's a Magnin School. The name does not make a difference. What you learn and what we learn as young men is to be men. So I wanna say this to you, I hope that this committee allow Lee High name to be a part of the three names and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thaddeus Swayzer?
Good afternoon. My name is Thaddeus Swayzer. I am a graduate of Lee High from the class of 2007. I stand before you today to thank you for considering Ms. Joy Wallace as a candidate for renaming Lee High and here's why. I believe that she best fits the name for the school. She spent her entire 30-year teaching career down to her last day at Lee High. She was there her last day. I was in her classroom as one of her last students. I sit there and I watched her look over us the last day. I knew something was wrong with her. She got up. She was dedicated. She got up that morning sick. She came to the school. She left the school against her own will. So, I would just like to thank y'all for considering Joy Wallace Magnin High School as a possible nominee for the new school.
Peter Russo?
Yes, thank you all for coming here tonight and being a part of this. I wanna address something that was said, not the last speaker, the one before. The reason we're changing the name is because it is a symbol of white oppression. What you're doing is the work of white supremacy right now by coming here and saying that we should keep the name Lee High School. Not to mention, I saw you bumping fists with Ms. Bernard a moment ago. So we know who you're aligned with. Please do not listen to a thing that man just said. That is pure ignorance. I'll be joining Lee High School this year as an ACT prep teacher. I'm very excited to be coming to Lee High School from Estruma, where I was Teacher of the Year, teaching history. We're not tearing down history, we're making it right. We're telling the true history of this country. Keep your ignorance out of this.
Mamie Hall?
Good evening. My name is Mamie Hall. I'm a 1971 graduate of what was Robert E. Lee Senior High School where Javony Reb was our mascot. And I'm gonna say "our" because we didn't have a choice. I was also part of the first class to fully integrate as in from ninth all the way through 12th. In preparation of attending or integrating, and it was a major sacrifice for us, those of us who opted, who chose, those black students who chose to attend Lee High School. I won't bother to share many of the experiences and under ordinary circumstances, I would not be standing before you, but we are approaching our 50th-class reunion. As a result, several of our white classmates have reached out to us to say that they understand that our experience and our feeling about what is now Lee High School is not the same as theirs. When I think about how we became students at Lee High, I have to think about the mentors in the Baton Rouge community who actively sought black students who they felt would represent our community to go out and take on that task. I'm approaching my time limit. So I just wanna say, when I think about those individuals, the first... So I just want to say, when I think about those individuals, the first person I think about is J.K. Haynes. Most of you know nothing about him because he was the executive director of the Louisiana Education Association. At the time, that was the only education association that black teachers were allowed to attend. Thank you.
Jason Roberts.
Hello, my name is Jason Roberts. I am the son of Sadie Roberts-Joseph and the father of a recent graduate from Lee High, Orion Roberts. Uh, I just came here to say on behalf of my brother, uh, she spent most of her life trying to build the bridges that would connect the community of African-Americans and others in, in the city of Baton Rouge. What she wanted um, primarily was a unification of our community. I thank you so much for considering her name as a, a potential um, name for the school. We are honored as a family to even have her name mentioned, so I thank you very much.
I have refreshed the screen, and that is the last speaker. Is there anyone who would like to speak that didn't get a chance to sign in? Please come up. And if you could, please state your name so I can um, get it on our notes.
My name is Brenda Smith, and I'm a proud graduate of McKinley Senior High School. And I'm here this evening because I think you need to know that we are not here to just discuss the naming of Lee High School. We're changing our whole attitude. When we went to McKinley Senior High, we were not allowed to determine the name of that school. McKinley Senior High was originally called the High School for Colored Children. And because the school was funded under, well, the president at the time, McKinley, the school was called, was called McKinley Senior High. We had no say in that name. And if you changed it today, or if you changed it next week, I would still have the same fellowship of those people that I knew and loved and embraced me at that school. And I'm telling you, to change this name to another person's name is really going to defeat what we should be accomplishing. We should go ahead and do like, everything that is right. Public school, zero-zero-one. We're only discussing Lee High, and I understand that. But we need to set up a format where we don't have to have this discussion ten, twenty, or thirty years ago. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If not, we will um, at this time, close the public comment. We'll next go to the committee members who would like to give comments. We'll start with the individuals who are on the list, Mr. Brandon White. Then we will go to Ronald Gibson, and then anyone else on the committee as you'd like to speak, please raise your hand, and we'll turn your mic on. So raise your hand so they can see.
Good evening. Uh, so this is going into my fifth year at Lee High. Lee High is an awesome school. Uh, the thing I would like to say is, um, like the lady just spoke and said about renaming the school after individual, I don't think that that would be our best suggestion, um, to rename it after individual. Because of course, with individuals, different things can come up at any different time, and we'll be right back here trying to rename the school. Uh, you know, I was thinking, because we're um, located near LSU and on the backside of um, LSU and in Louisiana, Louisiana Magnet High School, uh, where we still use the LM. Um, you know, you have a red and blue, our state color could, I mean, our state, uh, our state bird, which is the pelican, that could be the mascot. And uh, you know, you just have red, white, and blue with, with that. And so, being an athletic director, um, I know it's a lot of different things that goes into, you know, the renaming of the school, rebranding the school, um, especially as it relates to athletics with funding. But if we was to keep the LM and use Louisiana Magnet, then we could still keep the LM and keep a lot of different things that we have at the school. Um, but I just don't think that renaming the school after individual would be the best um, thing for this community or this school. Thank you.
Hello. Alright, my name is Ronald Gibson, and uh, I would like to agree with Mr. Brandon White here um, in that we shouldn't be naming the school after a person because, once again, this could bring up problems in the future. Um, and also, I kind of want the community to be like, united. So like, we don't have the school named after a white person or a black person. It should just be named like, neutrally. So um, I was thinking Liberty Magnet, because once again, we keep the LM, so then we won't have to spend as much money on uh, on rebranding the school. And then also with Liberty Magnet, you could keep the Patriots as your logo. So it's like, a lot less that you would have to change money-wise, so then students and parents wouldn't have to be spending their money on like, different things, especially if they play athletics. Um, so thank you.
Any member would like to speak? Please raise your hands.
Good evening. Again, my name is Shawna Ross. Um, this will be my third year at Lee, the school formerly known as Lee Magnet, and um, my fourteenth year in EBR. Um, when I first got to Lee, there was a huge shadow cast upon the school. I would reach out to many of my extraordinary past colleagues, and they tell me, "I'm not coming work at that school." I don't, yeah, getting volunteers sometimes is hard, all because of a name. And so, um, I would like to thank the board. I know that there are people with wonderful memories, but um, it, the name has for, far too long cast a shadow upon us, and um, I'm grateful for this opportunity to bring about a change. And with so many passionate people who have stated their opinions about the name change, we look forward to our many new supporters and volunteers that would help our, that will be there to help our wonderful students. Two suggestions that I would like to um, give, I would like to piggyback off of Mr. Gibson, Liberty Magnet STEM Academy. Now, we know that liberty means different things to different people. However, we want to create a new narrative and leave a new legacy on the grounds of eleven-oh-five Lee Drive. And this is one where our students will continue to be free to learn and excel academically and grow socially and emotionally. Also, as Mr., as Coach White um, said, we can keep many of the things that students have fundraised for and uh, parents have paid for, and keep the LM. The district could also save money, money that could be used for other student needs and district needs. Also, we would like you to consider STEM Magnet Academy of EBR, or EBR STEM Magnet. And this will focus on what we do academically rather than on a specific person. And we know that there are many, many deserving individuals. If we could, you know, we plaster all, everyone's name on the, the walls of the building. But something, as Mr. Gibson stated, that's neutral, would um, represent what we do. We know that no one name is gonna satisfy everyone, but we ask that we put the focus on the students and less on certain individuals, and be proud of what the students at Lee Magnet have accomplished and what they continue to accomplish each and every day. They love each other, they support and respect each other despite their differences. So, I am proud. Um, I've never worked at Robert E. Lee. The Lee that I wear on my chest is for leaders, and that's what, what we stand for. That's who we will continue to support and love, and um, we're proud of our school. We look forward to the new name change, and we'll wear that proudly across our chest as well. Thank you.
Um, I will, I would like to piggyback on the comment she said about the school being for leaders. Whenever all this came up, I said, you know, we want people to recognize this school whenever students are going to apply for college. What is a name that will bring a wow factor and a prestigious factor on their, on their college applications? One of those names that popped into mind was Leaders Leadership Magnet High. You keep the letters with that one. I think with such a name like that too, you automatically instill in those students a sort of significance, a sort of leadership, a sort of higher standard. In return, they apply for a college, and that is also, just comes with a certain prestige as they are applying for college and that name is on a college application. As I mentioned whenever I was introducing myself though, I am a proud member of the South Downs community. I would like to say that the campus is gorgeous. We are very proud of that in our, in our neighborhood of South Downs. If you look at the public comments, South Downs was one of the mentions that was, that had the highest percentage. As we know, most schools in Baton Rouge are named after the community where they're located. With that, another name that I would offer would be South Downs Magnet High School. Please know your neighbors in South Downs take a lot of pride, like what I said in that community, both from the front and the back. We have definitely seen that it's been amazing during this quarantine period where we have the community in our neighborhood coming to that school and using those grounds. We want to promote the neighborhood too, to send those children there. People like me who have young children with such a name of South Downs, that may be an added promotion. A third one is a little bit different. I said, what really makes this school different? The campus. Again, the beauty of the campus and the academics. With that, I kind of looked around. I passed by it several times today. You know, there's a really neat feature to it. It's a little creek that runs through it. There's also, we call it a bayou, but it's a waterway on the side. With that, I thought, hey, what about Creekside Magnet Academy or Creekside STEM Academy? I think that's a prestigious name too. A waterway just kind of brings a sense of pride, and I think with the name recognizing the beauty of the campus, we'll continue that the students will have pride in the beautiful place where they attend school every day. A lot of students don't have that opportunity in Louisiana or nationally. And so with that, I think my three recommendations would be Creekside Magnet High or Creekside STEM Side, or Creekside STEM Academy or High, any variation. Leadership Magnet High, where you get the wow factor on a resume, and you instill that leadership into students. And then South Downs, which is as many schools in the community are already named after the neighborhood where they're located. Again, thank you very much for your attendance. I enjoyed listening to everybody with their presentations and their insights and seeing the diversity of the city of Baton Rouge.
Yes, sorry. Think it's on? Alright, here we go. Uh, well, first and foremost, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. What I can tell you from what I see inside of this room and the comments that I've heard thus far is that we have a caring community. Whether you agree or disagree, uh, there is enough concern inside of this building tonight that shows us that as a community, we're ready to move forward. And what I want people to know is, I'm not sitting on this committee to argue back and forth about what the name of the school should be. I'm on this committee to ensure that we turn the page from the past, and so we can move forward with our future. And I am, uh, I'm beyond blessed to sit on this board with our students and hearing their voices and also hearing the concerns of people that actually attend the school. Because at the end of the day, that's whose voices really matter, is our students. And the people that have to attend the school after the fact. And what I can tell you this, I heard somebody in here make a comment when it came to the mic, and while I do respect this comment, I will say this. He said that uh, then his last name still lingers on this school. What I will lift up and say is that a man or a woman's legacy is built in their last name, not their first. And with, with, what, what we're trying to do here inside of our district, we're trying to be the number-one district in Louisiana. And we can't do that if we are trying to set the standard for the rest of our state. So again, I just say thank you all for being here tonight, and whatever I have to do to work with you so that we can ensure that we get some good names put up, I will absolutely do that. I just wanted to thank you all and just send my regards. Thank you.
Uh, I guess one of the things I've been thinking about, uh, I'm not married to a particular rank, or not, uh, as we go through this, but you know, one of the goals that we have is for everyone to be able to get an outstanding education at the school in their neighborhood. And then if they have a special type of license toward the arts or towards STEM or to whatever, then they would go to a magnet school. And one of the things that I believe is that people have associated the term magnet, meaning that that's better than any of the other schools and how they go. And so, not that it's a knock on the magnet school itself, but it's also almost a put-down on the schools that aren't named magnet. And I also don't know what the boards in the future will be doing, if we're getting ready to do a strategic plan, not to take this as anything wanting to change Lee, uh, or change the school to whatever it is. But I really wonder about the wisdom of maintaining the name magnet in a school. Is that necessary, and is that wise for us to do that? Or should you just pick the name of the school and be X High School? And yes, it is magnet, even though it doesn't have magnet in its name.
But I, I start to worry about putting too many, uh, it's been a long time since I've had English, and I'm a, I'm a engineer, so I don't do English very well, but uh, an adjective uh, to the high school with a magnet or any other kind of designation, whereas we should just maybe consider having just the name of the school. I'm not married to that, but I just wanted to offer that up. Thank you.
Lee Dunn Jr.? Can you hear me? Alright, thank you. I want to echo uh, School Board Ben Melanis's comments about the public, and thank the public for coming out and offering up their opinions and recommendations to this body. Uh, community input is always important, so I'm glad to see we have so much community members that are here present and those that are tuning in uh, online. I want to offer up a couple different things. Uh, I'll address Mr. Godey's magnet designation uh, statement since he just made it. I, I think that designation is important, Mr. Godey. I understand what you're saying about the other schools, but I think we as a school system and a community need to do a better job and improve those non-magnet designation schools. I don't think we should, should uh, punish or take away that designation for students and principals, administrators, and teachers who, who deserve that, that designation. So, I'll just throw that out there. Um, as it relates to naming the school after a person, I, I definitely think it should be named after a person, and I also think it should be named after a person of color. This school has been named after Robert E. Lee for seventy-some odd years. Uh, and we know originally the school was named South Down, which is the name of a plantation, and the school streets that surround it are named after Confederate leaders. Once the civil rights movement started, as to snub it in the face of African-Americans who was looking for a better quality of life, freedoms, and liberties that their white counterparts enjoyed, they snubbed it in the face and say, "We're not gonna just name it South Downs. We're gonna name it Robert E. Lee after one of our Confederate generals." So I think we should definitely look at someone from Reconstruction and name it after. I think obviously PBS Pinzback, who is the first African-American governor in the country, and Governor of Louisiana is a great name. I also think Oscar Dunn, who is the first African-American lieutenant governor in the country, Lieutenant Governor of Louisiana is a great name. Judge White offered up Mr. Joshua Wilson, who's from that era as well, is a uh, state representative from that area, as well as a descendant of the Is a state representative from that area as well as a descendant of the community there. So I think we should definitely do that. Sadie Roberts Joseph is a good idea. But I think we can serve multiple purposes by naming it PBS Pinchback High. And if you understand and know the school and the campus like I do, having two daughters, one of my daughters is now in the audience who will be senior next year. There are different buildings there on the campus. You can name some of those buildings after these individuals. So I think you can solve multiple problems and get multiple names on the school, not just the school itself, but the buildings as well. So those are some things that I will offer up to the committee to consider. I think you can have multiple bites at the apple if you look at the multiple the gymnasium, the arts and science building and things of that nature. Thank you.
I'm Corey Delahousses. I just want to bring to the board's attention that we're here to make united change in support of recognizing a culture and a tradition and a morality of an era in which we no longer want to be burdened. We're not here to change or erase history. We're setting a precedence for which was unimaginable and was unattainable when the school was built. We have to reconsider, this parish had the longest running desegregation case in history. Reverend Mary Moody was one of the persons who served on that task force. She stated in 2007 that let us continue to build on the past, live in the present, and prepare for the future. Let's not forget that. That's something we try to instill in our kids daily. And that's part of the community at Lee. That's what they teach. I know because I've been there for six years. If our community leaders can endure the fight and struggles and the systematic oppression within our legal system for the betterment of our children and the generations to follow, then it is my hope that we can honor their perseverance by coming together to show that East Baton Rouge Parish is a progressive and a united front. And together we can prove that change is possible when we listen and we respect each other, no matter our differences. So it is my hope that tonight, before we leave, that we have a sense of pride in what we do. Because this is the most auspicious occasion we will ever be part of. I'm honored to be here. I'm honored to have kids who go to the school. And I'm honored to be a part of a community who's willing to change. We're the first community in the country in this time that is willing to step forward and say enough is enough. Again, we're not erasing history. It is what it is. All we're doing is we want to set a precedence for the rest of the world.
My Michael. Gino McLaughlin. I actually want to piggyback off of both Mr. Dunn as well as Mr. Delahousses's comments. As you guys are aware, I am a former student. I've been vocal about this school's name change for some years, dating all the way back to my years at Robert E. Lee High School. So first and foremost, I'm appreciative of everybody's service, including the public's input. And especially that of the students that are on the board here. At one point, I was in your shoes, right? And we actually had these discussions and unfortunately, we did not see that come to fruition while I was still in school. And so this has been an ongoing process, one of which I've never taken my eyes off the ball. Even if you go back four years ago, I was sitting in front of the board speaking of these very same things before my son was scheduled to attend the school. Again, at that time, we kind of kicked the can down the road. And now we have an opportunity here. My daughter's scheduled to now go to this school four years later. And so we have an opportunity to actually make some positive change. And so I don't think we should be afraid to necessarily name it after a person. And if it's named after a black person, I think I would ask take this off for a second. I think I would ask, why is it that we would be offended for it to be named after a black person, right? When you look at the legacy and the history of the school being named Robert E. Lee High School for 75 years, a name that was offensive for both myself and sounds like for several others who had to attend the school. I think we should certainly give that strong consideration and deliberation. You know, we're in a moment in America now that we actually, I think people are looking for strong progressive change, right? And I'm not talking about the politics of it, right? I'm talking about just the humanity, right? And honoring and uplifting voices who have for so long been ignored. And if that's of the students, if that's of the parents who were subjected to a name such as Robert E. Lee High School, why is it that we won't consider a black person's name? Out of unity, right? What is ununifying about considering a black person's name? And if you look at all the names that were actually suggested, all of them are actually of African Americans. I'm talking about from the public. All of them are of African Americans. The highest being PBS Pinchback. He got the most votes. Sadie Roberts Joseph, who I had the opportunity to work alongside. She got second highest. Ms. Joy Wallace, who I sat in her class, her English class as a senior in high school. She got the third most. Looks like MLK and some others as well. We've had some other names that were also offered up here tonight as well. So I'd like to acknowledge that. We are in a bit of a reconstruction right here today, right? We're trying to reconstruct and reconcile the history of that school and the experiences of the students. And so I think we, you know, as Brother Dunn talked about, looking at those names, it's certainly, you know, PBS Pinchback and I know Oscar Dunn certainly come from that Reconstruction era and also the one that was offered up by Judge Clark. I don't think we should be afraid or even shrink from this moment. And so I understand, you know, the politics. There are plenty of ways, Coach White and Ms. Ross, there are plenty of ways that we can raise money to, you know, address the, whether it be the names or even the school colors and changing of Mr. Dunn, you didn't even go far enough, you know. We can, we talked about STEM, right? Well, where's Exxon at this? You know, we could, you know, where's Exxon in this conversation? Or some of these other corporations, right, who want to, you know, maybe sponsor a building name, right? And so these are ways that the board can consider coming up with funding to do some of this. But that's the board's job though. Unfortunately, the board, it's the board's fault. We're in this position 75 years later because of the Board of Education, right? And so it's not our job to necessarily help them find the money. But I'm just offering up ways to kind of solve that problem. There are plenty of unique ways that we can address that part of it, right? But I don't think that just because, and I hate to filibuster, I'm sorry if I am. I don't think that we should run away from names, especially just because they're African American, right? I don't think that would be, I don't think that would do justice to the voices and experiences of those who've longed for something else. And so those are really my, you know, the gist of my comments. So thank you.
Good evening. As a teacher at Lee High, when asked to be part of this committee, first thing I thought of was, I think as every teacher would do, think of your students. And I think of all the students that have had to walk through the door and look up at the name Lee and think that that might impact them in some way as they start their morning each day or leave to go home at the end of the day. Walking past and having that potential impact on their daily lives, I think is a pressure that no student should have to go through or need. And so, you know, I'm very open to the naming of the school, whether it's after another person or whatever we decide. If it's something neutral, I think it's something that we need to take pride in as faculty, as students, as a community. Because at the end of the day, as a teacher, I'm here for children. I'm here to make sure the children of the community are receiving a proper education and, you know, everything is running smoothly. And to think that a student might be impacted by the title of a building and in a negative way, I think, I think if that alone doesn't cause for change, I don't know what does. If we're not thinking about our children and our future, I'm questioning what we're thinking about. Thank you.
Hello. All right, so I'm not very good at speaking off the seat of my pants, so forgive me if I stutter a bit. But as a student at Lee, I've lost a lot of great teachers, teachers that I was in the process of having and teachers that I could have had because of budget cuts and just turbulence in the school. Two years ago, I had three English teachers. And last year, I had two geometry teachers. And it's definitely impacted some of my classes. It's, my parents considered changing my school because they were worried I wasn't getting the education I needed. Some of my classes, I just wasn't having the proper chance to succeed in. And I'm worried that a major rebranding would bring that, bring something like that back upon my, well, senior year of high school, which is arguably one of the most important. I couldn't really care less as to what the name is changed to. I'm just afraid that in a big rebranding project, I might have some of those same difficulties and it might impact me graduating as strong as I could. That's all. Thank you.
I'm gonna take a page out of Mr. Gino's book and take this thing off. It's tough. I want to kind of speak to the administration and the teachers at Lee. Myself, like Gino, four years ago, we both had incoming freshmen at Lee, the school formerly known as Lee. And we were concerned about that legacy and that name. I'm an alum of Capital High School. In the city of Baton Rouge, you're known, your history, your reputation is developed and created by what high school you went to. So that was a realistic concern for us in my home and his home about having our children's name attached to the legacy of Lee and what that represented. So that's what motivated us to come here four years ago and address this issue. Because the $55 million investment, the curriculum, you know, the experience educationally, you know, it was undeniable, you know, when you look at some of the other options. You know, it was, it was a no brainer to choose Lee. You know, both our kids are on the Magnet track, so you know, there's only two or three options. You know, depending on where you are in the city, logistically, certain options work better than others. But all the investment that was made into this school, you know, it became a no brainer for a lot of parents. And many of us said, we're going to ignore the name, let the kid go and try to fight the name at this school board. So that's what we did. But as the administrator mentioned, I'm sorry, your name escapes me. But the legacy that that name carries with the students, with parents, if we invite friends and family over to games and things like that, you know, the first thing people talk about, you know, Robert E. Lee and Lee High School. I'm not comfortable with coming. I'm not comfortable with supporting. Now, we have overcome some of that and we continue to do that. But that is a realistic concern and a realistic issue. These administrators, these teachers do an excellent job. You know, as I mentioned before, our experience with two children has been, you know, exceeded our expectation. And I think we should not leave this administration, this student body, left with this cloud over their head to deal with currently and in the future. So I think we should think boldly. We should be progressive, as Mr. McLaughlin said. And we should take action and rise to this occasion. We didn't do it four years ago as a body, as a school board body. And the onus shouldn't be on us or the public. The school board decided not to do this when they had an opportunity to do this. So they wasted the taxpayers' dollar, you know. And now this movement of support behind this arrives here with us today. So we have to act. We got to think boldly. We got to think progressive. And we got to do what we need to do. And there are many private sector partners and public sector partners that will do what they can to help the school system raise the money. So let's not let money be an option. Thank you.
Give it a second to pop back on. Okay, here we go. I'm sorry. I wanted to say this early. I didn't get a chance to say it, but I did want to let everyone know. We have had several community stakeholders and partners that have already reached out and said they're going to donate money for signage and help this school out. So I just, I didn't want people to walk away worrying that we have to somehow try to find how we're going to allocate dollars. The community is coming together and they're going to stand behind helping not only this school, but our students. So I want everybody to just know that part. Now, several other people who are still reaching out, and if there are any community stakeholders out there that are watching or listening, if you want to donate to help us get this school back where it needs to be after the renaming, please reach out to our EBR Foundation. That is going to be our crowdsource funding leg to help us establish all of the funds we need to get extra money for signage, uniforms, anything that pertains to helping our students to get the resources they need to get them where they need to be. Thank you.
Is it on? I do have a quick just question. We do know that the school district right now is 81% African American, correct? And maybe Mr. Godey can answer. The school, this school, Lee High School specifically, or maybe Ms. Ross, this school specifically, what is that percentage? Do we know demographic wise?
Currently, we have 1,134 students enrolled. 75.2% is African American. 14.6% is white or white. 6.3% Hispanic, 3.5% Asian, and 0.3% Native American. So 75.2% African American. Yes, sir.
Is that your incoming enrollment or that last year?
That's our incoming.
Did it change much from last year?
No, sir.
I think that's something to consider again. You know, I know we're, you know, just to kind of, you know, just reiterate what I was saying before, you know. If we're talking about it, largely the district is educating African American students at this point. And not to get into all the different reasons why that is, but if that is the case, you know, and looks to be the trend as we move forward. And also just a trend just in this, excuse me, in this parish, just in terms of demographics, you know, who's, who lives here, right? Again, we should not necessarily be shrinking from the highest names that are on this list outside of South Downs. And again, as Mr. Dunn pointed out, South Downs, previously, that name being derived from a plantation. From there, the suggested names are all African Americans. And I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the suggested school names. From there, the highest ones at that point are African American names. And so the highest of them, again, being PBS Pinchback. Sadie Roberts Joseph next, Joy Wallace, MLK, and then so forth and so on. So again, just wanted to, you know, just looking at those numbers and think about who we're educating. And not, again, this is not to even downplay others who were in the school as well. But again, I don't believe that African American name would be offensive to anybody, especially if it's one that's chosen with great thought and somebody with high prestige as well and character.
Ms. Ross, if you don't mind, how many teachers have left Lee High in the last two years?
I don't have an exact number, Mr. Delahousses, but the reasons vary greatly.
Did you say it's over 20?
In my time there, maybe a little under 20.
So we're here discussing the name change. Mr. Godey had made a recommendation in the resolution, amendment that he had filed into Mr. Lanis's motion to take $200,000 out of the general fund. I would ask that you put that, the funding towards getting qualified teachers who want to stay at the school, no matter what the name is. Because our kids deserve that. My son has had four geometry teachers this past year. My daughter had three English teachers her senior year. I feel for you because my son isn't getting the education that I thought he should get. Just like my daughter. She was a 4.5 graduate. My son is struggling because just like you, he's gone through so many teachers. So if we can address the administration and get qualified teachers who want to stay, then that will help build our school and our foundation. Again, no matter what the name is. Because you can't have a fundamental education and a groundbreaker breaking school if you don't have the qualified teachers to teach. So Mr. Godey, I would ask that you take that $200,000 that you suggested in your school board meeting that you wanted to put towards the signage and put it towards paying our teachers what they deserve and giving our kids a good quality education.
Mike Taylor, I'm not used to public speaking much. But I was at Robert E. Lee High School right before Ms. Hall. And at that time, it was a majority white school and a very minority black school. And I do not believe the people were taken care of, the black students who came to our school. And I am so impressed with the students over there and your And I am so impressed with the students over there and your forward thinking about what you want the name to represent and to signify. I mean, I was just blown away by it. And then when Ms. Rouse, Ross, sorry, when Ms. Ross mentioned the percentages, I'm thinking, we, we have, um, Hispanic and, uh, three-point-five, I believe that was maybe Asian, which is maybe the same reflection of the percentages that were, uh, African-American students when I was there in the seventies. And if that, having a white man slave owner, of course, was a horrible thing, maybe we just need to take people out of it again. Maybe we just need to extract that part of it. It seems fair to have a black woman, but then an Asian person and maybe a Hispanic. Um, the point of the school is a quality-high education. The point of the school is making sure, and I kind of like liberty, that what you get from this place will propel you throughout your life. What you get from being those four, only four years at that school will make the difference in how you see other people and how you feel about yourself and those who taught you. So I like the forward-thinking of, of liberty that was released. It didn't strike me until you spoke. Um, but I'm also concerned about these small percentages of people that will not have their, necessarily their race or their sex or their cultural heritage reflected. How will they feel, um, with a na-, a name that is a person? Because a person's got to be something, some category. My two cents.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to address a couple of quick points, because people have brought up topics. First of all, I want everyone to remember that Mr. Lannis and I were not on the school board four years ago when all of this first came up, so this is our first, first time through this. And secondly, uh, Mr. Delahoussaye, you talked about, um, the two-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars I was proposing to put in the budget. The purpose of that was to make sure that we had followed through on getting the name changed, so all of that could be done. But that resolution also set up a mechanism to go out and collect funds. So the intention was for that money not to come out of the, uh, of the general fund. But in order to have the general fund front it, so that it could happen and happen quickly. Because I've seen a lot of things pass, but then if you don't have the money behind it to make it happen, it doesn't happen. So that was the only intent there. It was not to take general fund money to, to do this change. It was to front it so they could get going, get done quickly, as many members of the community wanted, but then have it backfilled by community support and going out and do fundraising. And that's why I've already solicited the foundation fees Baton Rouge Parish Schools. As Mr. Lannis talked about, if you go to their website, there's a donation, uh, button on it. You can find it on the EBR Schools website. So we are already actively collecting money, uh, for that. A lot of people talk about two-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars, where did that number come from? Uh, that's not a pulled-out-of-the-air number. Uh, in fact, in talking with the principal, he thinks that number's too low. And I guess some of it depends on if we keep the L, it might not be quite as high. But simple things like repainting the, uh, the logo in the middle of the basketball courts, a minimum of fifteen thousand dollars. And so you have athletic uniforms, if there's a change in mascot. Uh, of course, I don't think you'd bought football helmets yet, or have you? The Patriot helmets, so there may be some things that, that can be done and saved on. But I just wanted everyone here to know that it was never the intention of using general fund money, but it was simply just to make sure it got done. And then solicit, without pouring of, uh, concern and support from the public, I really do think we'll be able to gather that money up and, and implement any change that comes about. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna take one more comment and then we have to go to the nomination process because we have a time limit on these meetings and we have two hours. So we're, once we take the first, after you make your comment, then we'll do the first nomination, there'll be opportunity for people to speak again. So I'm gonna let you, um, make your comment, thank you very much, and then we'll go on to the next step.
Is it on? Yeah, just in terms of, uh, I know you were mentioning equal representation, uh, or being worried about the representation of, uh, students of other demographics. Um, I, I, I think it's not quite analogous in the sense that, obviously, African-Americans, uh, had to go and attend that school under a name such as Robert E. Lee High School, right? And so when we look at any of these names that are actually listed, or any of the names that are actually brought forth tonight, none of those names equal or equate to a name such as Robert E. Lee. None of those names, whether it's black, white, Hispanic, I don't think anybody would be offended by any of those names, whether it be now or even at some point in the future, right? Um, and i-, and if, even if I was a student that went to a, a, a school that just so happened to be named a white name, that wasn't, I don't think that's the problem right there, that's not the problem, you know? It's just what, who, who the person is. And obviously, we know that Robert E. Lee has always been recognized as a highly offensive name and also because of what he represents to many people, uh, still to this day, right? And so, again, just looking at the names that have been, uh, brought forth thus far, it's not really, you know, fair to qu-, to equate them, whether it be now or in the future, um, to a name such as Robert E. Lee because of the offensive nature of his name. So, that's it.
So now, so now we go to the next part of our process. And I'm gonna turn so I can talk to the committee. I want to thank y'all. We've had some really good discussions and I know we will continue to have discussions as we move forward. At this time, if you will go to your email that I resent to you right before the meeting, and while you're pulling it up, I want to go over the guidelines. Each committee member can nominate one name. Everybody gets equal chance to nominate one name. We're gonna pull it up as a results, it's on the screen, as you type it in, it's gonna show. After we have everybody, all thirteen committee members have nominated, then we will begin looking at the names and begin voting until we get it down to three. Because I, I kind of have a feeling we're gonna have, we have thirteen committee members, we're gonna have more than three names that we end up with. And as I, as I shared earlier, at the board meeting, community members, you have another opportunity to speak at five o'clock at our school board meeting, which will be in this building. So I just wanted to share that with you. Oh, Mr. Goode has corrected me, it's gonna be virtual, but there will be ability to comment virtually. So I do apologize for that. Well, I wasn't here, so I do, I do apologize, thank you, Mr. Goode. So that one will be virtual. So at this time, if you're having any trouble finding your link, it should be open, and nominate one name. Yes, sir.
Is it the name that, that is most nominated would be considered, or how does that work?
Okay, how does this work? Everybody nominates one name, that's thirteen. Then you will each get three votes for your top three. Then we will keep going until we narrow it down to just the top three. I have five rounds, six rounds set up, if I have to do more. So, um, audience, please bear with me, because I'm having to cut and paste. I want it to be seen where everybody can see what we're doing, so it's very transparent. So everybody gets one name to nominate. Yes, sir.
I was just clarifying, you said first round, everybody gets one name to nominate. The next round, we're all going to vote on the names that everybody nominated until we get three, the three top.
Yes, sir. And we will keep going till we have a consent, a consensus of the committee for the top three names. Those top three names, when we're done after all the rounds, then they'll go on a, they'll go to the superintendent, then go to the board, but the board makes the final decision. So I'm gonna step off to the side while y'all are voting.
This says nomination of the school, right?
Yes, sir, the first link. No, not round one. The other ones are locked, only the first one is unlocked. I'm gonna read them.
I'd be remiss, ladies and gentlemen, if I didn't take a moment to apologize. Uh, when we got up here earlier today and we were talking about the housekeeping rules, I asked that everyone be respectful of all speakers. And, um, I owe you apology, Mr. Glasper. Mr. Glasper was a second speaker and he got up here and he spoke respectfully. One of the speakers that followed failed to do so and, um, slung a few negatives in his direction. And for that, Mr. Glasper, I please hope you do accept my apology. Agree, and we apologize. Please accept my apology for not intervening. Thank you.
I'm gonna apologize for having to work from over here because I've gotten older and I have to be able to read the screen, just like everybody else. So we have one nomination for Lee Magnet, a nom-, one nomination for Liberty Magnet, two nominated Liberty Magnet High School, one Liberty Magnet STEM Academy, one Louisiana Magnet High School, one Oscar Dunn Magnet High School, one PBS Pinchback Patriots, one South Downs High, one South Downs Magnet High, one South Downs Magnet High School, and one Southside Magnet High School. So I'm gonna minimize the screen, I will take these names and put them in the voting, and they will begin the voting process. So please, um, bear with me as I do this. And if, yes, sir. E- each name will be on here regardless of similarity. So if one is Liberty and one is Liberty Magnet High, all names that are nominated will be on here for each person to vote. We do not remove any names. Good question. So I'm gonna turn the mic over to Mr. Kuzan and we're gonna allow individuals, if they would like to speak again, because you know what the thirteen names are, while I'm doing this.
Only committee members, correct?
Only committee members.
Ms. Ross.
I can't remember which one of you gentlemen stated, um, something about naming the buildings. I want to propose this. If we use the name or select the name Liberty, and then maybe because that, because we have a STEM building, a biomedical building, um, a digital arts building, naming those individual buildings after, um, notable, um, African-Americans or Americans, I think that would be a great idea. For example, Catherine Johnson, many of us know her from, um, Hidden Figures. And she was an amazing mathematician. Maybe our STEM building, um, could be named after her, um, for all of the wonderful contributions that she gave. But I, I can see us almost getting to a place where we can compromise by, um, choosing individuals who excelled in that area and, um, naming our respective buildings after those. Just an idea.
Mr. Goode, I want to thank you and Mr. Lannis for, and the board as, as a whole, for allowing this discussion to happen. I have friends across the country who are watching what we're doing. And I, I couldn't be more proud to live in a community that has really taken a step forward. And under your leadership and perseverance of the board, Mr. Lannis, the board member, thank you for putting us on the forefront. Um, this is important for my kid, it's important for our future, because I want our athletic department, I want our teachers, I want them to be successful and be proud of where they work. But I want our kids to have a legacy. I want these kids at that table to walk away with an education they deserve. So thank you for taking this. And I hope that going forward, you have this passion and drive to ensure that our teachers and our students get the education and the funding they need to be successful and to bring our community to a forefront. Baton Rouge High has gotten a lot of, a lot of attention over the last fifty-some years. The school formerly known as Lee High, we need to, we need to start breaking records. So thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ross, that's, that's exactly why I brought that up. I, I figured we would get to a point where everybody would have different interests. And I think if we look at those buildings and name them after folks, I think we would get some compromise. For me, uh, Oscar Dunn, PBS Pinchback, uh, Joshua Wilson, folks like that, would have to be included in that. I do understand what you're saying with synergy with the actual industries that individuals were in. But again, being that this name of Lee was on this school, represented someone, uh, from Reconstruction or before Reconstruction, I think we should honor those, uh, people from that time as well that looked like us. We don't have schools and buildings named after those people. And mu-, many people didn't, wasn't even aware of their contribution to this, uh, state or the nation. So I think we should give our African-American kids an opportunity to learn and explore, uh, what they came from and, and the potential that they have. And I just want to thank my, my colleague on side of me for adopting the, the name, the school formerly known as Lee High. Thank you.
We're good? Okay. Um, yeah, Ms. Ross, um, and I'll echo, uh, uh, Mr. Dunn as well. Um, I think it's something that's certainly, um, uh, worth consideration. Um, if, if I may, um, I've, I've probably, again, been a part of this conversation longer than anybody up here, right? Um, again, that goes back to nineteen ninety, I think it was nineteen ninety, it was six or it's ninety-seven, I'm about to age myself. Um, but the, the point is, sorry about that. Uh, the, the, the point is, uh, in all those years, I, I will say that, you know, liberty never came up. Uh, and even in, in these more recent conversations, uh, um, I'm not officially in the school system, but I spend a ton of time in the school system around, uh, young people at Lee High and also many of the other, uh, other schools as an in-class mentor. Uh, and having those conversations since, a lot of them obviously reaching out to me saying, hey, you know, here's what we're thinking, here's what we're thinking, uh, including my daughter and her friends who are incoming freshmen, um, uh, many of them, uh, certainly were looking at names, right? Um, and if, if I would, because of how this conversation first, uh, started with me, it started actually in my American History class when I was eleventh grader, right? And it was a bit of misinformation, uh, call it the miseducation of Black youth many times, right? And we were talking about the Civil War at the partic-, at that particular time. It was a good teacher that I had, but certainly because of, I think, just the environment, um, uh, in many ways, we teach our kids the wrong information, right? Um, I think this, whether it's Pinchback, because I, I, I'll be clear, I nominated, uh, PBS Pinchback, right? Um, he was not just the first African-American, uh, governor of Louisiana, he was also the first African-American governor of any state in this country, right? I think that's something that we should be proud of. I don't think that is anything that is offensive to anybody. If it is, I think we should all, we should all check our moral character, if that's offensive to you, right? That is a history lesson for everybody, not just at, at, you know, the school formerly known as, as Lee High, but around the country, right? Um, and I, I think if you look at the history, and I'm, I'm probably gonna give out the wrong facts here, but I think it might have been another hundred or so years before we had another African-American governor in this, uh, country. Again, that's something that we should, we could all be proud of and something that I think is worthy of being on a school building. I'm not sure if any of you guys knew that, whether it be the students or anybody sitting up here. To say that Louisiana, you know, had the first black governor in the United States, I don't think many people know that, I think that's something that's worthy of sitting on that building.
Yes, I thank you. I did not know about the history of PBS Pinchback, so I enjoyed in the community survey, reading about it. You know, I'm bringing it to light, and I will definitely, being a history buff, research more and learn about it. It was neat. I did want to clarify, going with history, though, the last thing that I would want anybody to interpret me or any of these panel members doing with the names for South Downs. I did do my research, of course. I did not want to come in here and propose that, hey, let's follow down this same path and rename this school after a plantation. I reached out, I did the research on it. South Downs, yes, it is a plantation in Louisiana. It is not, it was not in Baton Rouge area, if my research proves correct on it. It was not the land that Lee High is on at all. That was, in fact, the Richland Plantation. I reached out to the, what would he be, the grandson of the man who incorporated the South Downs area. I said, where did this name come from, South Downs particularly? He said, basically, it was in South Baton Rouge, and this is the answer I got from him, and the whole area had a Downey growth on it. So just before anybody leaves here and saying, hey, the committee voted to name the school after a plantation, that definitely is not my intent at all, and I don't believe it's any of these others. Just wanted to clarify the history on that.
I'd just like to give a little pushback on that. So you're expecting us to believe that the same developer who named the neighborhood South Downs and also named several streets in the neighborhood after Confederate generals, the street that the school is on after Lee, the head Confederate general, that this was not intended to name the community South Downs after the plantation that's in Louisiana?
I was simply saying that in my research, as I said it, I put my fingers into quotes that we, you know, in real life, I've been trying to come in as-
I understand what you said, but I'm just saying that is, it's tough for you to expect somebody to believe all those coincidences exist, and South Downs wasn't named as a reflection of the celebration of the plantation.
You know, as my duty on this committee, I did as much research as I could for that. But in saying it, I did, you know, quote, put those into quotes to take it as we all may weigh our sources.
Can you hear me? Yeah, just to be clear, you know, one, I appreciate you doing the research, and obviously, we were able to even articulate the fact that there is a Louisiana plantation named South Downs, because we also did research. That's not to say that there was one in Baton Rouge, no, we understand that, but there certainly was a Louisiana plantation named South Downs. I don't think, again, if we're going to divorce ourselves of Robert E. Lee, I think we should also steer clear of any sort of association with Antebellum South or Dixie or anything of that nature, plantation names. I think there are other names, other strong names that certainly have strong support, and so that's really the reason why I would steer clear of a name such as South Downs.
Do I have it on? So, thank goodness that technology is smarter than I am sometimes. We had two nominations that were exactly the same. So we had one committee member that did not nominate a name, and we had two that were the same, exactly the same, spelled the same, word for word. So when you look at this, there are 11. The reason we put it together is so it would not dilute the vote, because if you have two names that are exactly the same and different people vote, you may mess up with your voting and your data. So now go back to your email and go to where it says Round One. Round One. So while you're pulling that up, everybody will get to select three names, your top three. And I'm going to read the names to you. Yes, sir?
Things like Liberty Magnet and Liberty Magnet High School. Would those technically be the same? I mean, it's going to be a high school.
Not necessarily, no, sir, because we have some schools that are the school and high, and some that have high school. We have some that have senior high. So there, even though it's a little different, I would like to give everybody the opportunity for their name to be addressed. So I'm going to read the names to the committee. Louisiana Magnet High School, Southside Magnet High School, Liberty Magnet, Liberty Magnet STEM Academy, Liberty Magnet High School, South Downs Magnet High School, South Downs Magnet High, PBS Pinchback Patriots, Oscar Dunn Magnet High School, South Downs High. So the committee members each select three names. After you select three, hit submit.
Obviously, I did PBS Pinchback, and the Patriots was, that was just more about the mascot. Obviously, I wasn't trying to name the school PBS Patriots High School or anything of that nature. So I didn't know if that could be edited. I'm not sure.
Would you like me to edit that for you?
And I actually, I'm also, it could be PBS Pinchback Magnet. I don't care one way or another about that. Magnet High School or High School.
So is the group good with me taking the Patriots off of there? I want to see. Let me, let me take that off. Give me one second.
I guess it could, Magnet High School, I guess.
We can leave it on there, and the next round, take it off. That way, we won't mess up our voting. So everybody, please take a few minutes to vote. We have 11 responses, so that means we have two that need to come in. Now we have 12. Do you need help? Okay, as a mama here, I'm going to remind y'all, hand sanitizer. I'm sorry, I'm a mama. I have, I have to say it. So, we're going to go through and look at the percentages and see if there are any we can take off. So Louisiana Magnet High School had four. Okay. I have a touchscreen. So Louisiana Magnet High School received four with 30.8. Southside Magnet High received two. Liberty Magnet received three. Liberty Magnet STEM Academy received five. Liberty Magnet High School received 10. South Downs Magnet High School received four. South Downs Magnet High received zero. PBS Pinchback received six. Oscar Dunn Magnet High School received three. So at this point, we will be removing the zeros and the, normally we remove the twos. But I think today, we're just going to remove the zeros and go from there. So we'll be removing South Downs Magnet High. No, I'm sorry. I do apologize. We're going to, we're going to leave the fours, threes, and we're going to remove the twos and zeros, because if we just remove the zeros, it'll be the same exact vote. I do apologize. I'm not a politician, and this is, statistics is not my best thing, but I'm getting there. So we will be removing Southside Magnet High, South Downs Magnet High, South Downs High, and we will go from there. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Kuzan while I work on this.
Any comments from the committee? Mr. McLaughlin?
Just in terms of the edit, I think it can read PBS Pinchback Magnet High School. And I guess if my mic is still on, just for the sake of, just to point it out, it looks like Liberty certainly has some, some support. PBS has some support, then after that, it's South Downs, and then Oscar Dunn. Just looking at, talking to my committee members here, looking at where we are currently in terms of voting. A question, do we get three votes this time as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Lanis?
Yes. I'm just going to say, first of all, I am just, my hat goes off to everybody on this committee. The fact that, you know, there's no arguing, there's no fussing, this is what our community is all about. When it's something that is telling, when it's something that is complicated, we come together, we compromise, and we get through it. And I just hope that this is how we get matters resolved in the future. And I just wanted to let each and every single one of you know, I am proud to sit on this committee with you today, seeing the leadership that you have displayed for the rest of our community and the rest of our state. My hat goes off to you. Thank you.
Have only 18 to 20 minutes to complete this process? Okay, okay, just making sure. Okay. Because I don't want the time to run out. Well, we've done that before.
But I raised my hand. In light of the fact that we have Liberty Magnet STEM Academy, and piggybacking what Mr. White said, Coach White said earlier, having the LM, I'd like for you guys to consider the fact that if we stay with the Liberty, we take the STEM out, because we know it's already a STEM school anyway. But as far as for costing in future, you'd have the L and the M, which would go for our uniforms, which we wouldn't have to change. If we add the STEM A, the SA, I think there would just be a little bit more extra cost. So in reconsidering our vote, please consider that. In making this most expeditious and cost-effective manner, I would suggest taking out the STEM Academy part and leaving the Liberty Magnet as a compromise.
I think that's a, that's a good point. I would ask whoever made the recommendation, you know, what's their position on it, so we can consider their position, but I think that's a good point.
I would just like to mention, as a student, I would prefer to say LMHS compared to LMSTEMS. Just want to put it out there. Thank you.
As a side note, we've been there for six years. I have five different T-shirts that have either LMHS, Lee, LM, so I don't want to add to my collection. I'd like to, I'd like to recycle some of the shirts that I have and not have to purchase anymore.
That agrees not to vote for the STEM, and it would fall off. That's the easy way to do it.
On one thing, because this is the part of this process that I love the most, is the compromise. And I heard the students, they were the ones that came up with this idea, and I just want to, again, let you guys know, you are phenomenal, that if you go with, let's say, a school like Liberty High, I would love for us to make a commitment to saying, okay, let's reposition ourselves and name the buildings after the African-Americans that we talked about tonight, because a lot of this is also talking about cultural relevance. So you guys know who you identify as, you know what you're learning, but you also know leaders that have come before us and paved the way and have led us down this road that we're on right now. So I just wanted to say, if we could possibly come up with a commitment to say, okay, this is something that students could agree with, administration could agree with, I think this is something that everybody else can get behind too.
Saying that we want to be unified, and you want to go to a school that you can relate to somebody, then making it of color, no matter what it is, you're never going to be unified. We're going to be having this discussion four, five, six, eight years from now. Why can't we name one building after we designed, Building A could be after an African-American, Building B could be after, we could vote on how to name the buildings, just like we're doing here. But to say, you know, we could process it and discuss it like we're doing, but to make it a blanket statement, that's not really unity. So I'd ask that we reconsider and just bring that to the table.
This is what I was saying. I was saying, basically, that let's incorporate some of those names. I'm not saying that every single building has to be named after someone of color, but I am saying that let's make sure that if we are talking about incorporating and learning more about Black heritage and culture, let's make sure that we incorporate that too. Because I also heard, we have some Native American students that go there as well. Let's incorporate those things also, because that speaks towards cultural relevance. It's not just about learning about Black people, it's about learning our history collectively so that we can move forward and have a future together and establish together, and also build some self-respect, as well as just dignified unity and racial harmony across our city.
So I want to thank you for continuing the conversation as Mr. Kuzan and I set up Round Two. If you go to your email and select Round Two, the same as last time, please select three names. If you're having difficulty with your internet, please raise your hand, and we'll come and get someone to help you. So we've taken three names off, so at this time, please select your top three. That gives us 13. So our top ones are Louisiana Magnet High School, Liberty Magnet High School, and PBS Pinchback. Our top three, there's a delineation there, Louisiana Magnet High School, Liberty Magnet High School, and PBS Pinchback. So those are our top three. If with the will of the committee, we can stop here, or we can take off the threes and ones, but I think we have a pretty clear idea of where we're at. Do y'all want to do another round? Yes, sir?
I would just offer the ability to edit the PBS Pinchback to PBS Pinchback Magnet High School.
Typo. PBS Pinchback Magnet High School.
It seems like, that's what, it seems like the students enjoy that name. Seems like.
Okay. So are y'all good with that PBS Pinchback Magnet High School or High? You want the word "school" in it? Okay. All right. So, since we had a change, we're gonna do one additional round. Apologize.
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Comment, please.
Hello. Once again, my name is Ronald Gibson, and I would like to thank our council here for coming out today and having civil conversation into the change of what was formerly known as Lee Magnet High School. I would also like to thank our community for coming out to vote and listen to the, to the council as well on our opinions, and we're glad to listen to your opinions as well. And I would just like to, I would just like to point out the fact that I'm, I'm glad that Mr. Dunn over there came up with the idea to name the individual buildings after individual people, and it would be a great idea, and I, I, I accept that as a student, especially if we name a building after, like, people of different races and cultures and stuff. I, I think that's a good idea as a student, so.
So, I've never had to do three rounds, so this is exciting for me. Please go to your email, round three. There are four names. Choose your top three, and I think this will be definitive.
There are, uh...
Round three.
There are multiple choices of five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13.
I forget, I forgot to delete that. Let me get that. Don't choose those.
All right.
So, not to confuse the issue, but with respect to the ACT, SAT, and the codes that go with the school, does the characters that's listed, does that matter? So, if we put PBS Pinchback Magnet High School, which is kind of a tongue twister, if we just put Pinchback, would that, when you're doing the application, would it show the whole title, or would it just be? I know before it changed when we had our ACT and SAT codes.
So, as a former school counselor, the code is what you need. So, even if part of the name is cut off when you're applying for a college, your CEEB, they call it a C-E-E-B code, a CEEB code, or your ACT code, that code determines where your scores are sent and what school it's attached to. So, the name could be the whole alphabet, that code is what you have to get straight. Yes, sir?
Cleve Dunn Jr., again, and I see that our good people in the media are getting a shot of that image, and I would like to see PBS Pinchback on 9, 2, and 33 when they show that. So, can we make sure they have all names, three names that we selected when they run their story tonight, tomorrow, what have you?
Just put the mouse on it, and it'll show up. Okay, give me a second, I'll get it.
The questions that we were, I guess, kind of thinking through, would we have, what is it, on Thursday, I think, is the meeting? Would we have the liberty to edit that name down further with the idea of some might prefer the PBS taken off, if we leave this as it is, just so we don't have to vote again? Because obviously, we're all, you know, wanting Pinchback to be up there, but a version of, would we have the ability to possibly amend that name to just reflect PBS, I'm sorry, Pinchback Magnet High School? Or would we have to re-vote to...
This, this is only a recommendation to the school board. The superintendent will refer a name, but the school board can pick any of these three or any other name they want.
Got you.
So, if they want to amend it, or you want to ask them to amend it, that certainly can be done at that time.
Got you.
But this is only a recommendation.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We can recommend the names as is, but, but Stacy, we're gonna ask that you put a note on, on this name in particular, because of all the things that were brought up, that we wanted to be named, if it's named after PBS Pinchback, to be named in honor of him, but we also recognize some of the things that administration brought up with multiple letters as it relates to our uniforms, or multiple letters on SAT and ACT, you know, process and all of that stuff. So, we wanted to kind of consider that, and we'll be open to a simplification with just Pinchback High, if, if, if the administration would support it.
I, I will, I will put that in the notes. I'll put that in the notes, and we'll make sure it's shared with the board and the community. So, because we are done. Thank, thank you so much, and again, you may do additional comments at the board meeting. Thank you for your time and patience, and committee members, kudos to you. What a great job.